Mount Pleasant Town Council, special council meeting for this Monday, September twenty-second. Our agenda has been noticed and distributed. And hopefully everyone has a copy. Item number two is public comment. If you're here to make a public comment, please come to the lectern, give your name and address. Two and a half minutes, please, and I'll ask the town administrator to be our clockkeeper. Anyone for public comment?
Good morning, council. This is Hawn. Good morning, council. Mike Van Horn, Iron Bridge Drive. Uh, just want to take a moment, so please bear with me. As everyone knows, Mount Pleasant has been awarded the All-American City a number of times. The All-American City is, uh, basically, the city is given to municipalities that demonstrate the initiative and civic engagement and collaboration in their efforts to create positive impact on their communities. As we continue to compete with other municipalities, Mount Pleasant needs to be the gold standard. There's too many times where we're falling behind throughout the county. Salary needs to be the number one in the area. Recently, there was a graph that was shared about the pay incentive recommendations with specific educational backgrounds. These recommendations lag behind in five of the six categories. Restore the rollback for the millage rate at its upcoming. Also, let's eliminate all the legal battles that's costing thousands monthly. Create incentives for individuals that live in Mount Pleasant. Too many of our first responders are driving to other municipalities throughout the county, and they're also using town vehicles as well, which is costing them the taxpayers money. As you can see, I'm wearing a Freedom shirt to represent Charlie Kirk. I don't want to wear another shirt to represent anyone else, especially in Mount Pleasant. I ask that the council sits there and pays our first responders what they deserve. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
It's September, a month of never forget. My name is Kevin Grenade. I live in Tunes West. It's about a forty-minute drive to get here this morning. That means it's a forty-minute drive for the cops to get to me. Uh, we had a fire in my neighborhood. Fire chief took seventy minutes to get to my neighborhood. He disputes it and says it was forty-five, but it was a fatal fire and nobody on the staff of the fire department from the fire suite next door thought enough of it to come to the fire until forty-five to seventy minutes after. We have a problem in our emergency services. That problem starts with the nine-year. This is the month of never forget. You've been warned for many years, about a full decade, in fact. I've regularly spoken before this body as a citizen and as a council member. The abysmal pay our responders receive is insulting. Shows a total lack of respect and shows the extreme low priority that this mayor and the town manager place on those who risk their lives when already have. Now we're told to catch up pay for responders, the only way to raise taxes. Isn't it interesting that the town manager's pay goes up every year? Went from one eighty to, in nineteen, twenty-eighteen, to over two forty, two-hundred-and-forty thousand today. Yet, police and fire still make less than fast food workers in many cases. Oh, and I didn't recall any tax increase to fund the ever-increasing bureaucratic pay. When this mayor expanded the PR department from one employee to four, added a PR drone fleet and PR conferences, there was no talk of a tax increase for any of that. Regarding the take-home vehicle fleet for office workers out in the parking lot here, it seems to be, that seems to happen with no talk of a tax increase. Old red new car every couple of years, sits in the lot, and that responded from home. People respond from home have to take a twenty-year-old pickup truck from Santee to come here if there's a fire. It's disgraceful. I've seen it happen where they're calling people from home and it takes them an hour and a half to get here, and that's on a good day. They live in Santee and Moncks Corner, how are they getting here? The fire department's in disarray. We have office chiefs assigned very expensive take-home response vehicles. Want to know what their response requirements are? There are none. If they happen to respond, it's not a required duty for them. I mentioned the fatal fire in my neighborhood. Chief took seventy minutes to get there. Those office chiefs could be assigned to fire stations instead of an expensive office suite. The town could lease that space for close to a hundred K a year. All over the country, chiefs work out of fire stations. Very few places are they in office buildings. These chiefs can go work in the stations. They'd be providing extra, better service, and we could lease that space to someone for a hundred grand a year. It's just one suggestion, there's plenty of others. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, public comment is closed. Item number three is action to establish a millage rate and sales tax credit factor. Uh, this is a required, uh, meeting. Municipalities are doing it all over the state. There are many laws that are complex and difficult to understand, um, about the rollback, the millage bank, the, uh, sales tax credit factor. Um, I'm sure I'm leaving something out. Ms. Harness will straighten us out on that, but I'll turn it over to our staff to begin to walk us through this.
Good morning. So, property is reassessed every five years. The last reassessment was for tax year 2020, and this one is for tax year 2025. State law requires that the millage rate is rolled back for reassessed properties to a rate that generates the same revenue as the prior year. New construction and growth are not factored into this rollback calculation. The state also limits the percentage that the millage rate can increase. The amount of increase is determined by the population growth and the consumer price index. This year, the percentage rate is three-point-oh-six percent, which equates to an allowable increase of one mil. The state also allows for any unused millage rate increase from the prior three years to be banked. The town has a millage bank of seven-point-two mils as it has not increased its operating millage rate in the past five years since the last reassessment. This means the total allowable millage rate increase is eight-point-two mils. The rollback rate and millage increase limitations are placed on operating millage only. Debt millage is allowed to increase to cover the cost of debt service. Tax year 2025 is based on the value of property as of December thirty-first, 2023, plus the value of properties that transferred or sold in 2024, along with new construction in 2024. For the town, reassessment property values increased ten-point-four percent, and new growth plus property transfers was an additional four-point-nine percent, for a total increase of fifteen-point-three percent above tax year 2024. This increase in appraised values equates to a thirteen-point-eight percent increase in property assessments. And of this assessed value, four percent properties are fifty-nine percent, and six percent properties are forty-one percent at the assessed total. And this ratio of residential to non-residential and commercial properties has remained fairly consistent for the past few years. Now, included in the reassessment data is a state limitation which places a fifteen percent cap on reassessments for properties that have not transferred in the past five years via a property sale. This example shows what the cap looks like. If two homes were valued at six-hundred thousand prior to reassessment, and the first one increased twenty-five percent to a value of seven-hundred-fifty thousand dollars, and the second increased eighty-five percent to a value of one-point-one-one million, you can see the taxes due of nine-hundred-forty-one dollars and thirteen-ninety-two, respectively. However, the cap would limit both homes to a fifteen percent increase for the reassessed value of six-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars, so that they are both paying equal tax payments of eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. So what does all of this mean? Of the increase in appraised values, real property increased sixteen-point-nine percent, while personal property and motor vehicles decreased five-point-eight percent over tax year 2024, to give a total appraised value that is up fifteen-point-three percent from prior year. The town's current millage rate is forty-four-point-three mils. This is comprised of thirty-four-point-seven operating mills, which are subject to the rollback and millage increase limitations, and nine-point-six mils for debt service. The operating mills are rolled back by three-point-seven mils to thirty-one to generate the same revenue as last year plus account for growth. This total forty-point-six reassessment millage rate would then generate fifty-nine-point-four, fifty-nine-point-four million dollars, which is in line with the town's adopted budget. If council wanted to maintain its current operating millage rate of forty-four-point-three mils, the town has a total available of eight-point-two banked mills to do so. Increasing the mills by three-point-seven would bring us back to our current millage rate of forty-four-point-three mils, and we generate sixty-four-point-seven million dollars. If town council wanted to use all available eight-point-two banked mills, the rate would be increased to forty-eight-point-eight mils and generate seventy-one-point-one million. So this slide shows basically a different graphic of that same information. Last year's millage rate of forty-four-point-three with reassessed values brought in revenue of just under fifty-seven million dollars. The new base is the rollback operating mills from thirty-four-point-seven to thirty-one. This provides projected revenues of just over fifty-nine million, which again is in line with our current budget. We also have the ability to increase the operating millage rate from the rollback base for minimum amount of thirty-one to a maximum of thirty-nine-point-two mils. This would use the full amount of banked millage we have available from our annual CPI plus population increase for this year and the prior three years. So that is the full range, minimum to maximum. Now, besides establishing the millage rate, town council also needs to establish the local option sales tax or lost credit factor. The town has an additional one percent local option sales tax. The state sends this revenue back to the town in two parts. The state provides some as revenue to the town, but the larger portion is provided back, um, and required to be given back as a credit on the town's property tax bill. We therefore estimate each year how much that revenue is going to be. We divide that by the town's appraised property value, and that is how it's calculated. So this year, um, we are projecting that sales tax revenue will increase only slightly. The appraised values are going up quite a bit, so the tax credit factor is being reduced from point-zero-zero-zero-four-five to point-zero-zero-zero-three-seven. And that equates to a two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-dollar credit on a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar home. So looking at different scenarios of adding one, three-point-seven, or eight-point-two mils to the rollback millage, you can see that every addition of a mil increases the residential tax bill by four dollars per mil for a hundred thousand of appraised value. So equating that to a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar appraised property value, um, the residential tax bill will increase by four, times seven, for twenty-eight dollars. If we would increase the three-point-seven mils, that four dollars times three-point-seven mils equals fourteen-eighty, multiply that times seven for a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar home, and you get an increase of a hundred-and-three dollars and sixty cents on the tax bill. For eight-point-two mils, four times eight-point-two, times seven, equals twenty-two, two-hundred-twenty-nine-point-six. And since the lost credit is based upon the appraised value of a home, it doesn't change with the millage. And then this graph just shows the ten-year millage rate trend for Mount Pleasant, which is the dark blue line, second from the bottom, as well as other nearby municipalities for the past ten years. And of course, we do not have any information at, or what other municipalities are doing. So that is all the data. What would you like me to go back and replace by?
Any questions just on this portion? This is Mount Pleasant portion, correct?
This is the Mount Pleasant portion.
And Mount Pleasant is about thirty-two percent? Oh, it's thirty-five, thirty-two, thirty-five percent of your total tax bill?
Correct.
Correct. Residential tax bill, even less on commercial, technically. All right, thank you. Did you say that we don't know what the school district is doing or the council?
We don't. Um, I did reach out to the county. They seem to think that most municipalities were at least going to use the CPI plus population increase for this past year, but they had not received any.
Yes, sir. Ms. Chapman?
Just a question I was going to ask first, but everyone here needs to understand, we're just a small part of the county. Our residents pay, county taxes, school district taxes, that's the story. Two-year project debt, breaking down parts and whole areas. And they're a part of it, because that's what everybody needs to understand. But what can we do? To add to it, all those other taxes. And we're not sure our residents, when we pass out of the points. The law that was passed in the nineties, I was involved with, the municipal association. The law that was passed, which we talked about specifically, was to keep people in their homes. We need to make sure we're doing that. There were people back in the nineties, living east of the Cuckoo, who were taxed out of their homes. Whatever we do today, we need to think about that.
Yes.
Ms. Harness, if the one, thank you for your presentation. On the one mil, uh, and twenty-eight dollars, um, and then the three-point-seven, hundred-three-sixty, what's the revenue generated? I can't see it from here, I'm sorry. I'm sure it's on the board, but what's the revenue generated from the one mil? And what's revenue generated from three-point-seven?
So from one mil, it would be approximately an additional one-point-five million dollars.
Okay.
And for three-point-seven, it would be just under six million.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Moore and Ms. Harness, question I asked last Friday. I think y'all have that number for us. Um, what, what has been our operating surplus for our last few, uh, operating years?
Yes, sorry. I did have handouts for you, if anybody missed those out. Um, this has been our fund balance. And if you look at our ending fund balance for the past two years, what all of the obligations were that we have to take as far as leaving enough money in reserves for emergency funds, twenty-five percent of operating expenses per our policy. Um, the true amount available has been two to three and a half million dollars in the past two years.
Two to three and a half million. So after we meet all our obligations and we put the money in the reserve and all that, we've had two to three and a half million the last few years. Okay. So where I'll be coming from today is, um, we have this report that two business days ago, the HR committee took a look at, and I appreciate their work. And I've spent the weekend going over that report. And one of the things that it says is, um, and I have some questions about that that I'll ask either the committee or whoever has it, or maybe HR has a good working knowledge where all those numbers came from. Um, two things. One is, there was a reason, Ms. Chapman, that you mentioned that the law was passed in South Carolina about the rollback. And it's so that people can stay in their homes. And, and let's not forget the effect on businesses as well. That is passed along to our local merchants and, uh, businesses that rent in the major shopping centers and all of those, most of which are owned, uh, not locally. So it has an effect when, when we raise taxes. Um, but one of the things that's mentioned in this report on, on the wage, um, study, and let me add to our credit, we are bidding against ourselves in this. I got off the phone this morning with the mayor of Goose Creek because they are heavily cited in this study and went over all the stuff that they do and how they get there and how they did it. But one reason they raised theirs is because we raised ours. And one reason we're quote "behind" on this is we, we do this, what, every two years? We have this wage study done every two years?
We commit to at least every four.
At, at least every four. So when we raise it, everybody else is going to raise it. So of course, we're going to be behind when it comes back around to us because we'll jump and then it's like, I think you described it one time as the grab the bat that we all did when we were playing. So no matter what we go to today, at some point in the future, others will catch up or pass us because we, we did this. So that's why, uh, we are sometimes told that we're behind. But the figure that they gave right now is one-point-five million, which would equate to do the full rollback and add one mil back. And we can do, if I'm reading this report right, um, what the consultant said we need to do right now. The rest of that is, um, we, we have already collected taxes, um, what was that? Last fiscal year, three-point, right at three-point-five million dollars, more than what we needed to meet all our obligations. So we have already taxed our citizens for that amount of money. We already have that money sitting there. We don't know what it'll be this year. Um, we're only sixty-eight, eighty days into this year's budget. It's probably too early, um, to know. But in December, January, we get numbers, we do a mid-year correction. Um, we do not have to raise taxes to get to all the places that this report says we need to get. Um, we do not have to do it all through taxes. We might need, I think, to add one mil back after the rollback to do exactly what they say we need right now. But the rest, look, there was three-point-four million from last year sitting there that we didn't need. So, um, I think we need to do our work. Um, I think we need to do this through committees. Um, I learned a lot from talking to Goose Creek today. Their citizens' tax bills actually went down because of their local option. Um, tax, their local option, sales tax, other taxes. Um, their business license revenue has doubled in ten years, and their property taxes actually went down, even though the millage rate went up. Um, they have a lot of incentives, including, uh, two-hundred dollars a month if you live in the city, a hundred dollars a month if you're bilingual, and they have a down payment assistance program. And I am a strong believer that one of the best things we need to do, and we need to look at the use of some of this type money and get help from the state, is to have a housing assistance, um, program for our first responders so that they can live in the city or at least try to. And that's, that's a lot of work. Um, but we certainly can't do that just by one fell swoop raising tax millage today. Um, and also, there was no, I'm looking at the draft minutes, and Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, the draft minutes say there was no vote, um, in the meeting on Thursday. Um, no formal motion was made. As the matter will be discussed by full council at their upcoming meeting Monday, so there is no motion on the floor from the committee. Yes, sir. Wait, Ms. Chapman?
Not at the current time.
Can we get your microphone up?
Well, I'm not sure.
Or is it not working? Okay. Pull that one over.
Thank you. Um, first of all, what millage change do we need to make specifically to address the budget that we passed starting July one, twenty-twenty, July one for a twenty-twenty-six budget?
That would be the full rollback. The full rollback with no increase
Yes.
does meet our budget obligations.
Okay. What, what? Give me that number.
It would be the full rollback to thirty-one mils.
And thirty-one mils?
Equates to just over fifty-nine million dollars.
Okay.
Which covers what is in our fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Second.
Oh, wait, you still, yeah.
Second. Over the past four years, what have we been able to do for our first responders in the budget in terms of increases and in terms of additional personnel? In particular, I want to know about the fire department, since I'm chairman of fire.
Uh, yes, sir. I can answer the first part. Um, may rely on the chiefs unless there's a slide somewhere that can get more specific. Um, even during COVID, uh, council was generous to the employees when it was tough to keep the lights on type situation. Uh, council found something for employees to include our first responders. As we came out of that and things started to improve, uh, we settled back into a more common routine of pay-for-performance, merit-based increases, you know, three and a half to four and a half to five, depending on, depending on merit. Um, we've been moving forward with public safety personnel. Uh, we do have three hired in the police department last year. Um, we've added firefighters, um, you know, several times in the period that, that you suggest. Um, and we have more call for in fire departments strategic planning. Um, so I'd like, if, as we have a slide on it, it's probably best, uh, to speak to personnel if the chiefs do it directly, so.
Thank you. And in each case, our fire chief, police chief, public service director have all helped you put together their individual needs for each year. Is that not correct?
Well, that's correct. The budget process is lengthy and collaborative, and, uh, we work towards performing the level of service that, that we provide and present to you a budget.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Follow-up question about. I'm trying to think of how to frame the questions. The, they're creating a budget based on, they're creating a personnel budget based on the budget that you're giving them, not on a, on the level of service that council is providing. They are then taking the allotment of money that you are giving them and then saying that this is the personnel in which we can put in place. I mean, they're not coming to you and saying, we need two-hundred police officers, and then you're adjusting it back to us. It's, it's, it's what we provide as a budget first, or how is that?
We've, we've had a long-established level of service. The revenues that come in every year support that. And where we can't achieve the level of service, we do. And you see that really in strategic points. But that, that's our process is, is, uh, you know, with the expectation of what the revenues are going to be. Can we provide that level of service within the revenues? And that gets put into the budget that, um, that we provide.
I have a second part as, as well.
I was just going to say that typically, um, when there is available funds, priorities go towards public safety. It's usually your other functions of the town, whether it be recreational, court, or planning, that, that, you know, um, um, give way, so to speak, to make sure we can fund the public safety.
Okay, so I've got two thousand eleven, there's two hundred twenty-nine fires, and two thousand twenty-four, two hundred twenty-nine fires. And two thousand eleven, three thousand seven hundred thirty-five medical emergencies. Two thousand twenty-four, six thousand eight hundred thirty-seven medical emergencies, almost double. Um, service calls, five thousand seven hundred twelve compared to thirteen thousand one hundred and three in two thousand twenty-four. Firefighters went from one oh six to one thirty-two. So medical emergencies and service calls doubled as we're seeing that trend. Um, I, I, I believe the level of service of Charleston EMT has become more difficult as traffic has increased. And the need for our EMTs and paramedics to be on the squad, eight of ten squads at this point, am I using the right terms? I apologize if I'm not. And getting first on the scene to ensure that we are stabilizing, we can't transport, but we're stabilizing. Five thousand seven twelve to thirteen thousand, and three thousand seven thirty-five to sixty-eight hundred, over sixty-eight hundred. And then on the police side, um, non-violent crimes, thirteen thirty-one, down to twelve twenty-five. Congratulations, good work. And violent crime is one forty-nine to one nineteen. Now, service calls have gone from fifty-two thousand five ninety-one to a hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and ten. And our police officers have gone from one forty-six to one fifty-seven in that thirteen-year span, from what I'm showing. The median home price in two thousand eleven was three oh nine and is now nine sixty in the town of Mount Pleasant. So just some figures to put out there as we discuss the wages of our public safety.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and I think, um, to, to add to those numbers, that the, the really concerning ones that, that I heard during that HR committee meeting was in, in Mount Pleasant, we've got one point seven officers per thousand. You look at Charleston, that number is two point eight. Um, and so that's, that's a concerning disparity for me. Um, also, you know, you've, you've got a police officer here in Mount Pleasant with a bachelor's degree, making six thousand less than they would in Charleston. Um, you have firefighters who could make four or five thousand dollars more in Goose Creek. And so I, I, I think we're just at, at a point where it, it makes a lot of sense to invest in, in our first responders and our police and fire. Uh, my concern is that we're falling behind other communities. Um, and, and so I'd like to see us, um, make a move towards, um, supporting our first responders um, in hopes that, that more of them can live in our community versus commute in from Moncks Corner, Goose Creek, uh, West Ashley. Um, and so that's, that's sort of where, where my mindset is right now. So thank you.
And I would like to, um, add to that, that that's one reason that I think a housing assistance program, because salary-wise, I mean, wh-what do you have to make? I'm not a mortgage person. What do you have to make to afford the median level, median price in Mount Pleasant now? Probably more than any first responder is making anywhere in the area. But if we had a housing assistance, uh, program on there, it gets them there quicker, it's taxed differently, it's not, you know, it's not payroll-related. Um, a question that I have that I would ask either our HR director or our, uh, chief financial officer. Um, when looking at this report that the committee looked at on Thursday, it says, "The study focused only on base pay, not the full benefits package." Though they did look at specialty pay and certification for public safety options. So there are different ways to give incentives, and we'd heard even before we got this that one of the areas we need to boost is, is incentives. But incentives don't all happen every payday, right? They happen when people meet the requisites. And I'm looking at our chief, when they, when they get the education or they get the training, and then they, and then they get it. So that wouldn't necessarily happen in the next pay period. That would happen at some point, right? So when, when this was, when this number was given, did this, I'm talking about the one point five they said we need to come up with right now. Did this include other, um, employer-related expenses, you know, taxes, insurance, all of that, or is this just the base pay? Okay, so if we do that one point five, we can do what they say in this report that we pay for, we need to do right now? Right. Yes, sir. Ms. Rambo?
Um, I think one thing that's important to keep in mind with the study was that the study recommendations were based on an average. Um, an average of, um, the different areas studied, which included areas outside of Charleston like Greenville, um, Columbia. Um, and, and so we also know that the cost of living here, particularly in Mount Pleasant and, and Charleston in general, uh, is much higher than it is in those other places. So I think comparing ourselves and trying to be average, uh, with those places is, is not good enough, quite frankly. Um, and as, uh, Mr. Brownstein pointed out, um, yes, it's, even with this potential one mil increase for that salary study, an officer in the city of Charleston is going to make sixty-five hundred dollars more with a bachelor's degree than they would with us. And that is even with, that, that's after we do this, um, study. So in my opinion, it's, it's not enough. It doesn't go far enough. Um, I think that our citizens naturally understand, um, they're smart people, they understand inflation. Um, the national inflation rate from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five was twenty-five point eight percent. Um, and I don't have the exact figure that's broken down for Charleston, but I would assume it's probably even higher than that. Um, and so if the increase is a thirteen point eight percent increase to hold the millage rate the same, um, we're really coming out ahead as far as inflation is concerned, um, particularly if we're going toward, if it's being put towards public safety. Um, so I don't think the salary study goes far enough. I think we need to go a step further. Um, I don't, we, anyway, I think we need to go a step further. In addition, um, and this has been touched on a few times, but just to look at the numbers a little bit differently. In twenty-eleven, there was one police officer for every four hundred and sixty-nine residents. Now there's one police officer for every six hundred and eighteen residents. Um, that's a, that's a big difference. Um, and also in that timeframe, which is one hundred percent the right thing to do, is we have SROs in all of our schools, um, but that's also less police officers that are on the street, that are patrolling. And I've heard lots of feedback from, uh, folks that they don't see police officers in their neighborhoods, patrolling and doing things like they typically used to. Um, and so I think we need to take two steps. I think we need to go a step further than what the salary study suggested, which was just the average. Um, and then I also think we need some room in there to add, um, some police officers and firefighters to our, um, forces. Um, so I would be in favor of, uh, holding the millage rate at thirty-four point seven, uh, for those purposes.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a thirty-four point seven operating millage rate and the lost, the sales tax credit factor as recommended by staff. Um, I also respectfully ask, um, my child has a medical procedure. I came to this meeting to be here so that I could be here, but I need to leave in eight minutes. And so if
Second.
if people could just respectfully not pontificate for hours so that I can be here for this vote, please let me vote on this. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. So you're, so in effect, there would be no rollback?
No rollback.
So that's a no, no tax rollback?
And let's direct, and let's direct it towards our first responders and our employees and inflation. I know, I know.
That's a budget. Um, and just so everyone knows, the budget is not on the agenda. We can't vote on the budget. We can only vote on the millage rate. Um, I will add also that, um, on, on that, on that note, um, there's an election in less than sixty days, then the whole new group of people could be elected, and there is no restricting that. We can't, we're just raising the millage rate, right? Mr. Praglari, we're just setting the millage rate. This is not a budget ordinance where that money goes to that purpose. Okay, I will tell you why I'm not voting for that motion, in that we have enough that we have already collected from our residents. Where if we do one mil and add, um, back the, uh, the surplus, we can still get there and still give up and, and do what this law meant, um, why it, it, it directs us to do a rollback. So, um, I would, I would vote for the one mil, uh, add back after the rollback, but, but not no rollback at all. I think our citizens deserve a break when we have already collected enough money that is sitting in a reserve to do the same thing. Yes?
Our benefits package is, uh, consistent with the other towns, or our benefits package is, uh, above the average, equal to, or less than the average? Because that's not part of, that's not part of the study. Uh, Ms. Harness, um, there's three point five, uh, budget surplus this year, but there's no guarantee it'll be every year. But has it been fairly consistent over the last couple of years? Because a millage rate keeping it consistent is going to be consistent over five years. Will the budget surplus be relatively consistent, or has it been a history of that?
Historically, we have tended to be in that two to three million dollar range. That is not to say, we, we try and also budget to that so that we don't have a huge surplus and we are using the funds that are available to us. So that's, does that answer your question?
I think so. I, along with each of the other council people, want to preserve, protect, and enhance not only our police and fire, but our other, uh, areas of, uh, our employment. The question really is just how it's done, whether it's done in two pieces or it's done all, all at once. And so I think that's really the question.
Okay, question. So just real quick, GM, you gotta get out of here. Uh, can we have a, a budget committee meeting, or a budget meeting on committee day to shore up this as well, since this will be that same council we're talking about before the next council or possible council members get in? We could shore this up at the next budget at, on committee day at the next, um, and call a special budget committee.
Millage has to be set today.
I understand.
Yes.
But we could shore this up before anybody possibly up here leaves. Okay, that's good to know. I think we also need more officers, fire and police, and I support the public safety. And we are put on council first and foremost for the safety of our citizens. That's first and foremost. We could drive on dirt roads, but we need to have safety.
When, um, when does this tax revenue start coming in? No matter what we set the millage at, when, when does this money start getting collected?
Majority that comes in in January.
In January. So this money, none of this, no matter what we do, will even start coming in until January. And so by then, we can do our mid-year true-up on the budget, we can find savings, we can see what kind of surplus we have. Because this won't have even started coming in until twenty twenty-six, right? Thank you. All right, Ms., um, Whitley needs to leave. Are there any more comments? All right, all in favor of the motion to set the operating millage at thirty-four point seven millage, which is no rollback and the sales tax credit as recommended? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
How many noes do we have?
Four.
So by five to four, the motion carries?
Thank you also very much.
And good luck.
Thank you, GM.
Child's medical thing. All right, so the motion, motion carries. Um, any other comments? All right, since there's nothing else on our agenda, this meeting is adjourned.